Are you ready to do roll call?
Yes. Councilmember.
In order.
Councilmember Nordby?
Here.
Councilmember Woods?
Here.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Here.
Councilmember Schwer?
Here.
Mayor Mungy?
Here. Thank you very much. One second. Send my whole computer away. Tonight's, I got a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
So move.
So move, Councilmember McKenzie?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Schwer, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, we got one topic on the agenda this evening, and that is the 2026 budget for continued discussions on our CIP, and I will turn that over to Dan, our Finance Director. Well, thank you very much, Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight is part two of the capital improvement plan. If you remember, the last workshop that we had, we covered the first part, which was approximately fifty percent of the cost over the next ten years from 2026 to 2035 in the capital improvement plan, and that pretty much covered the streets component to it. So tonight, we're going to be covering the other parts, and this is pretty much an open, ask questions, get in for any information that you need. Again, gonna kind of show some of the information that we've already kind of seen, tonight we'll kind of cover the remainder of the CIP, we'll kind of look at the proposed levy, where we're at, and then some other information, and then have a discussion. So the next meeting, next workshop that we have, on the first meeting in September, we'll have to make decisions on where we want to be with that maximum levy. And then the following meeting, it'll actually be at City Council, I'll have all the resolutions to certify the maximum levy that we need to get in by the end of September to the county. And a reminder that it's a maximum levy, we can always bring it down, it doesn't become final approved until December, but we can't go up beyond that. So as we looked at the 2026, 2035, the numbers have changed a little bit, if you remember, I had kind of talked about that there was some discussion that was happening on both the water tower that is scheduled, now it's scheduled in 2029, so we wanted to confirm what our estimated cost was that. And then also the ladder truck for the fire department. So tonight, we're really going to be kind of looking at that, the asset preservation and the park dedication, we're going to be looking at the electric fund, we're going to be looking at the equipment fund, park fund, so it's kind of the remainder of those components. So we have our Fire Chief, Jason Mallinger, here to kind of talk a little bit about the ladder truck, because that's going to be a high-cost item, and then also Ron, since he covers so many of the budgets, but he can also address kind of the water tower and what we're looking at with that. And then any other questions that you have, we certainly will try to answer those questions for you. Need to really emphasize again, and been trying to do this the last couple of meetings, what this means, this 26, 20, 35 capital improvement plan, and what it means is that to be able to afford that, we need to do what this is showing. For the streets and the street debt, that we need to have a $248,000 levy, it's not just this year, it's going to be for at least the next seven years on the street part to it. Right now, that's about a 3.2% levy increase. Then there's the parks, and what's in this plan right now would require an additional $30,000, which is not in our current budget, when we were at the 6% for the city and 5.84% overall, so it would need to be added to be able to afford what's in the parks plan. And then the asset preservation needs a $142,000 increase. Now, both the parks and the asset preservation are going to be needed for the next ten years, those increases. So what it means is that right now, we're going to be starting every year with an approximate 6% levy increase, it goes down a little bit as our levy keeps going up, the percentage obviously will go down a little bit, but it's still going to be up above that 5% range to afford what's in here. In addition to that, it's going to have impact on our internal service funds, because in our internal service funds, we charge back equipment and building maintenance. Right now, what's in the plan would end up, we would end up needing an approximate 5% per year increase into those, and for the levy, that's going to be about a $28,000 or 0.36% levy increase. And for the non-levy component, which is really our enterprise funds, our utilities, it's going to need an increase of just under $14,000. In addition to that, to be able to afford this plan, and the bigger, the biggest driver is for the water, it's going to be that water utility, for the water, wastewater, and the surface water, they're all going to be really, they're being driven by the road, the major road reconstruction projects, and the costs associated with those. Right now, on a 10-year financial plan, we're looking at the water, wastewater, and surface water, that we're going to need a 6% increase in those rates, starting in 2027, all the way out to 2035, to be able to afford this plan. Solid waste, we're working on an RFP, we, you know, collectively, the City Council gave us the direction not to change those rates until we go out for that RFP, which we will do next year, I think September 1st, a new contract will go in place, and at that point in time, we'll have to adjust the rates. Right now, the rates, we're taking a loss, but we've had a fun balance in there, and that was the decision City Council had made a few years back to not raise those rates at that point in time, so there will be a rate change for that one. All in all, what I'm trying to emphasize is that there's a lot of cost here, and this is our big driver of what's going to contribute to the increases in our levy requests. It's going to increase taxes for our residents, and that's where we need to make sure that what's on here meets the goals of what the City Council wants, that we adhere to this as best that we possibly can. Things always change, but it's difficult to then add on huge expenditures on top of that, because this is already having this much of an impact. So anything that we add in addition is going to end up being higher and higher and higher. I do have some graphs towards the end of this presentation to kind of show you where we're at, for, I think I got a 10-year look at what the levy has been, what the fiscal disparities has been over the past 10 years, and then kind of a comparison in the past five years of what the levies and the levy changes for cities in Ramsey County have been. And you'll be surprised at that, even though we have the second highest tax rate, we've been pretty much in line, in the middle of those levy increases the past five years. But our rate will be higher, because we don't have that market, taxable market value that some of the other cities have gotten in the growth that they've received. And a lot of that is, as you're well aware, we're predominantly a residential city, we don't have that commercial base. And flip side to it, without that commercial base, that's why we're a winner on the fiscal disparity side to it. So when we look at the categories that are here, tonight, we're going to be talking about the categories of building and facility improvements, capital technology, which there isn't a great deal into, parks and playgrounds, parks and open services, and then we're going to be looking at the ponds and natural resource, resources, vehicles and equipment. So here's the facility one into here, and the facility numbers are what are coming from the WOLD facility assessment that was done and completed, I think, last year, so the numbers are just being carried over. If you remember, we actually will have to go into the WOLD report to see the detail, because it just shows the summary by facility on our capital improvement plan itself. But you can see in 2026, you know, the big expenditure that is part of, on the plan is the community center building, and if we look over the whole 10 years, the total need on our building facilities is $17 million. And again, to be able to afford all of that with the money that we have today, we're also going to need to be increasing our levy approximately $142,000, year after year after year, all the way through, to be able to afford what's on here. Questions?
I have a question. So for facilities, this is either just needed maintenance or deferred maintenance that's needed to the buildings or other facilities that the city owns, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, it covers all of the facilities, it covers your three major facilities of being Public Works, City Hall, and Community Center, your three major facilities that you have today. You guys can jump in anytime, I don't believe there's too much cosmetic or aesthetic improvements that are in any of these plans, it was pretty much, you know, roofs, you know, anything that had to do with exterior as far as waterproofing and so forth. This is where, earlier this year, because it was in the 2025, the card access system, it was, it was more of all of those types of components that are in there, it's not, you know, wall coverings, painting and that kind of stuff, it's more roofs, HVAC equipment. We have to realize that those three major facilities all have something pretty close in common, and they're all 20 years of age. Normally, your roofs, depending on what type of roof it is, is going to last, you know, 25, 30 at tops, HVAC systems, 20, 25 years. So we're all, we're at that point with our, unfortunately, with our facilities, that there's going to be a lot of needs and costs associated with that, just to maintain them in basically in their, I'll say, current states, to make sure that everything's still operational. Why we're at this point is kind of where we kind of started back, you know, as a city, you know, four years ago, and that is, they're truly, to me, you know, there was an equipment replacement schedule, there was a look at streets from a five-year street program, really looking at the major reconstruction every other year, but there really wasn't that comprehensive look. Obviously, there was nothing that was on our facilities, so there truly wasn't money dedicated for a plan to take care of our facilities in the manner in which they need to be. So now we're playing catch-up, and we're having to, you know, be able to fund those, because they're coming due within, you know, the majority of it's coming due within the next five to six years. And so that's where, you know, for the, you know, this current City Council was the one who approved that facility assessment from WOLD, which then allowed us to start gathering the data, and then make sure that we were being as comprehensive as possible. And if you remember, last year, that got added into the capital improvement plan, which is significantly needed. But there's a cost associated with that, and that's where, you know, part of my responsibility is to let you know, what would you have to do to be able to afford this? Your perspective is to look at these things and say, hey, do we really need it? And our department head should be able to give you justification and answers to why those items are needed. And I think that you'll find one of the biggest things, we haven't had a lot of the facility repairs being done since I've been here, but one of the things, and I, you know, I'll have Ron and Jason speak to this, that I personally, and I have been in government and watched facilities and replacement schedules for many, many years. I have never been as proud as I am of our department heads that we have on how fiscally responsible they truly are. When we sit down and we look at this plan and they edit it from year to year, they'll sit and look, and even though on a replacement schedule it says, hey, this vehicle should be replaced in 10 years, so two years from now, we get to replace that. I'll sit with them, and they'll be the first ones to say, you know what, it's perfectly fine, we don't have a lot of maintenance, we can push this out, you know, two, three years, and they'll do that piece to it, that's pretty impressive. So they are, they do a very, very good job. So this is what the facility is based upon, you know, the WOLD assessment, what it's going to cost us. I think we've recently did an RFP for some HVAC work here in the City Hall, and I do believe, and Randy, you may want to speak to this a little bit more, but what the WOLD's number had in it versus what the results came back of the proposals is higher.
Yes, it was higher by 25, 50, depending on where you looked on the WOLD report.
Yeah.
So, and just through that, or for that WOLD report, there was ratings, one through, I think, four or five for the needs, and we went through those multiple times, kind of with a fine-tooth comb, and just sectioned out all the ones, the most important ones that were on there. And there's a lot of stuff on there, you know, there's $100 for caulking and $50 for this or $200 for that, and that, that little stuff that we can do, that like Dan had spoke about, or like the HVAC, the leaking roofs, the kind of the major stuff that needs to be addressed. I know Randy has met with contractors, roofers up on the City Hall roof here, we've been spraying water on the roof, trying to find where these leaks are coming from, finding if it's roofing, if it's siding, we've had contractors out here, the roofer's out here. The HVAC, the RFP just got closed for the HVAC stuff, and talking with the HVAC guys and the roofing, roofing guys, and Randy can probably speak to it a little better, because he was out here with Burwell, but I think the Burwell roofers were saying that, hey, we can probably hold off on the roof. Normally, you do the HVAC when you do, or you do the roof when you do the HVAC, because you're pulling everything off with cranes, and they have cranes here to do the roof, and there's some cost savings, but I think they said that with shape the roof in here in City Hall, we could probably get the HVAC stuff done, and maybe come back five, six, seven years later and do the roof. But just so you guys know, that we're shopping around and doing what we can within this report, and trying to find what the best way, the most affordable way to do these big projects that need to be done, you know, probably, you know, sooner than later, but they probably don't all have to be done at the same time, so we can have some time to, you know, have, have the money set aside to do these, or to do these properly, and to do them in a responsible way, where we're not just fixing the HVAC and then coming back in three years and doing the roof, and having those things pulled off, or working around those where it'll cost more money, so.
If there's anything you want to add.
Just with Burwell coming out too, like I said, they were really impressed with the roof on how well it is, and like they said, they wouldn't touch it, and the one thing that they pushed, what I talked to Dan about, is they said, just having our roof being so sectioned off, we could plan, you know, like a three-year deal, and do like one area, do the next area, and the other area, because they're not all adjoining, so it at least cuts down year to year on what we're spending.
Was that built, built that way back in 04, then, that way?
Just how it's.
With just in sections?
They're not adjoining at all.
And I know, and we've talked about the facilities before, I know that, you know, people have kind of picked apart, or you guys have picked apart, you know, hey, can't we do this, or can't we do that, the little caulking stuff, and we definitely, most definitely can. There's smaller contractors out there that have looked at some of this stuff, so I mean, I don't want you guys to get lost in all them little, little, you know, $100, $500 things, you know, that stuff will be handled, it's, we're looking at like the bigger things, and working with Dan and Brian on, you know, hey, this is kind of where we're at, this is what the bids came in at for new HVAC for this building, and we can, this absolutely needs to be replaced, this, you know, so we're checking out all the different avenues that we can to try to make this as affordable as, you know, we can for the city, so.
Other questions that you have regarding the building and facility improvement section?
I mean, I guess one question I have. So just looking at the big numbers, the Public Works building and the $3.9 million in, sorry, 2031, which I know is like six years out, but what, I mean, what's the, what's needed there, is that HVAC stuff, or?
I think the biggest cost in that one's the roof.
Is that the roof, okay.
And probably ATRAC at the same time.
Okay.
Same thing, that's all that might get pushed out if it's in the same shape that this one is.
Okay.
I'm guessing, and again, that's kind of the whole, the whole deal.
Yeah.
There, so.
Yeah.
Being it's that far out, you know, the closer it gets, the more we'll kind of pick it apart.
Okay.
We have roofers, we usually call a few different contractors, have them come out, look at it, get different opinions, hey, what are your thoughts, what do you think, you know, what can we do, you know, so.
Working, I mean, we're fixing some of the leaks without having to do a major.
Right, yeah. And I guess I'm not trying to, you know, nickel and dime it or anything like that, I'm just trying to figure out like, and roofs go out, I mean, that's just the nature of, just nature of buildings.
And I think it's the HVAC at Public Works too, I mean, we do have one unit that's out right now that we have on order, you know, so I mean, that stuff might not be quite the 20, but it's been there, and we're starting to show the wear.
Yep, okay.
What year was that building on First Street built? Your Public Works building?
Public Works is 2009.
That's, okay.
Yeah, we still call it a new Public Works building.
Yeah, well, yeah. I remember which used to work out of.
It's like anything else, some things grow faster, some things take, you know, like the roof here, we got a little break, so we just don't know.
Yep.
Best guess.
Dan, something you said earlier, the 6% increases to the, basically, all three water funds, does that fully fund the water tower?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And then, do you have a best guess, and I believe it would be a guess, when the next one after that would be due?
The next?
Water tower, is that a 20-year, is that a?
I can't give you an answer to that.
Okay.
We're doing more because of a capacity shortage, so I would say that the other one would be more just routine maintenance.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it, this, exactly what Randy said, this is a capacity thing that has been on the list for a long time, 15, 15 years, 20 years maybe, I don't know. But where this would, where this water tower would need a rehab, I, the one that we'd be replacing, the biggest factor is the capacity, and then the other driving fact would be, if we had to rehab this water tower, I don't know what the exact numbers would be to rehab it, but I am just throwing a number out there, probably be a million and a half dollars, 1.3 million dollars to.
The person behind you is agreeing with you.
Okay, yeah.
Morgan's not going to talk today, but he'll give us the signs for it, there we go.
Yeah, so Morgan, you jump all over me. Morgan's way more in tune with this than I am, but them are, you know, some of the factors, and the water tower, since I've been in any type of position to look at this kind of stuff, you know, it's, I saw in one of her report, they said, hey, you have a shortage of storage here, and I, when I knew nothing about anything, I got in a panic, and I think I talked to Morgan, and he's like, ah, it's been like that for a while, you know, we got to find, so, so, yeah.
Okay.
And there was no other talk of a water tower going in any other spot or anything like that over the years?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so that was studied, in a study, I think, that was completed in like 2020, 2019, 2020, and that, that, it was a tower sighting study that looked at, you know, different options, one of them being, could another tower be built in a, like a third location, have a third tower, basically, to kind of satisfy the capacity or storage capacity shortfall that the city has been facing for some time. Ultimately, I think, from economies of scale and just available real estate, the preferable alternative for the North Tower was to reconstruct next to the existing tower, keep the old tower online as long as possible. Obviously, that impacts some playground equipment and things like that, but then, when the new tower is done, take the old tower down next to it, maybe repurpose some playground equipment, and kind of repurpose the park at the bottom there. And from a life cycle standpoint, that was one of the metrics from a finances standpoint, you know, there was a recommended alternative, so that basically was studied a few years ago, that's the estimate with inflationary adjustments that has been in the CIP this entire time.
Question, what water tower are you talking about?
The North Tower.
I don't, I don't know where the tower is.
Our park, yes.
Between 13th and 14th Avenue.
Yeah, okay.
Just north of the high school, a little.
Okay, yep, okay.
North of the high school, and we have two wells, there's wells one and two that are right next to that.
Okay, and then the other one, the other water tower is one at Northwood, right?
Correct.
Yeah, Northwood is the other water tower.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it, Morgan.
Thank you, Michelle.
Other questions on the buildings and facility improvements?
No.
Capital technology, really, what's in here is just the SCADA, we incorporate in the technology fund, which is an internal service fund, computer replacement, and that stuff is included in the operating budget, because we're on a, pretty much a, I think they're, Metro INet's moved to kind of like a five-year replacement schedule, so we have something in there every single year to replace some computers that are, that are being outdated. And then there's the parks, I think we've kind of, I don't know if we've really looked at all of the park pieces, but this is what, with the assistance of the Park and Rec Commission, and Councilmember Schwer sits on that, this is what they've come up with for their 10-year plan at this point in time. And you can see over the 10-year period, that comes to just under $7.2 million. And again, to be able to afford this would require an increase in the levy of $30,000, which to date, we do not have in the budget, which would be something that we, it's one of the items that, you know, kind of outstanding for discussion, which will be at the end of our presentation here tonight, which then will continue the first meeting in September. Questions on parks?
Yeah, the sidewalk along McKnight Boulevard, is that the east side of the street?
North. Along which one?
Left, right?
It would've been the east.
The east.
East side.
East side, yeah, yep.
It was from South Avenue to.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Anchor Drive, the new Anchor Drive.
Has it been determined? I mean, I feel like the apartment complex that was just built there has majority of that side of the street, has it been determined what part of that is the city's?
I did not, this isn't something that I put in, in there, this is something previous, I think we just left it in there, yeah, it was in the, Morgan.
Thanks, Morgan.
As I recall, and I'm going off of memory here, but when the original modern CIP that you guys have been looking at for the last several years was compiled using a lot of different planning documents. planning, uh, documents, I believe the sidewalk connection on the east side of McKnight was something that was either identified in the comprehensive plan or another planning document that it was thought at the time, we need to, we can't just delete things because, you know, uh, they need to be carried forward. And so, um, that, that is where that item came from. Um, when the anchor development went in, staff with the developer did look at the feasibility of building a portion of sidewalk on the east side, had some conversations with Ramsey County because the city was engaged with Ramsey County at the time for the new traffic signal at McKnight and Anchor Drive. Um, the, the right-of-way needs and the grades, um, are very difficult to contend with in terms of adding a pedestrian facility or, you know, a trail or a sidewalk or something outside of the curb line on that side of the road. And the county did kind of say, yeah, that's a, I mean, the two hundred thousand dollars in, in the budget might not be enough depending on, you know, some further analysis on what the right-of-way needs would be, uh, knowing that especially, uh, there's a home on the corner of, I think, South Ave and, um, yeah, South Ave and McKnight that is kind of up in the hill and there's not a lot of boulevard space there for a walk or a trail, right? And so, you know, retaining walls, additional right-of-way, and it's a county road. It's not a, it's not a city street and there's an existing facility on the west side of the road, right? So, um, you know, priority and where that needs to fall in relation to, you know, expenditure, city expenditures, uh, for other pedestrian, uh, facilities throughout the city, that's certainly up to the city council. But those are some of the challenges that, um, that particular improvement faces. So it doesn't make it a bad idea. It's certainly been in the adopted plans for some time, right? But there are some challenges there that are certainly, um, acknowledged by the county and, and would be challenges that if the city led a project there, that would likely need to be funded by the city.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Morgan. I guess with that two hundred thousand, I would like to talk about that further. I mean, obviously it's, there are challenges. I mean, as the naked eye sees it, I mean, there is some challenges with that. So to have it budgeted for twenty twenty-six, um, if that's somewhere, if those dollars can be reallocated somewhere else for a sidewalk or, um, because this, this looks like a larger study that we'd have to do, uh, to navigate whether a sidewalk can go there or not.
Was Parks asking for that?
No, I'm just putting, I'm just putting it out there.
Or is it something you guys want to remove from there since there is a sidewalk on the other side of the road and there's traffic signals on either side for crossing for pedestrians? Um, does this make sense?
That's why I'm bringing it up for discussion.
Yeah. Other thoughts from the council members on this?
Nope.
I mean, my, my thought if Cassidy is willing is, is to bring it before her group and see what her group comes back with the recommendation. Um, that'd be my thought. Uh, I mean, what she says kind of makes sense to me.
To, to further it back, refer the money back into our.
Yeah.
See if it's feasible to even do.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
We'll have this brought back to.
I will bring it back to Parks and Rec.
Perfect. Thank you. Other questions on items that are in, um, this Parks and Playground's path and open space section? If there's no other questions, we'll kind of look at, uh, natural resources. Um, there's, I think, what, five items on there, uh, the remainder of the Emerald Ash Bowl program, uh, pond vegetation management. Um, there's the, uh, I think Silver, Silver Lake Ariator Pump, Casey Lake Ariator Pump Replacement, and then Pond Dredging Maintenance. Any questions?
Is a dredging and maintenance of the parks something, or the ponds, something that we normally do?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, it's, they're evaluated. Morgan, when did we last have them all evaluated?
We just did an update last year.
Last year.
Okay.
They, they check the sediment, you know, in the inlets, outlets, other, see where they, what needs to be, you know, dredged.
Okay.
Or heights of water and depth and.
Does that include the natural, like down by Silver Lake where they have that holding pond that goes into the lake? Is that part of that too then?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, um, so the last couple few of these that we have done, we've let the Ramsey Washington Metro Watershed District lead them because they actually take care of the mobilization costs and the bidding and, um, some share of the engineering as well too. So in terms of, I guess, dollar for dollar, dollar value, piggybacking on their annual program, because it's a large project that they actually put out for bid and so the prices, unit prices tend to be a little bit lower for our little pond. So last year we did, it's usually winter work. Last year, uh, you know, again with them, we did the pond just south of South Avenue by Cowan Elementary. Um, and this year on the list, they're still looking at it, but I think they might do the other pond further south, uh, of that one, um, in the southwest corner of the Cowan Elementary Pond as well too. So that's historically what that budget line item has been used to fund. And usually the prices come in really good, so, um, but that's what we have out there right now.
Okay.
Where are these ariators in Silver Lake?
So the ariator in Silver Lake is over on the northeast side in Maplewood. In Ramsey County.
Is that up by the, uh, boat launch up there in Joy Park on that corner?
It's, it would be to the east of there, close, in between Century and the boat launch in there. Um, we inherited that, um, two years ago, I believe. Um, I think, I believe the county took care of it and then the county decided that they didn't want to do it anymore. So Maplewood said no to it and, um, yeah, and I think a decision was made to keep, to take it over. That wasn't, well, I guess it, when it happened, I was around, so, yeah, it's something that we just kind of inherited. Um, and the maintenance co, or the maintenance numbers that we have on there are from the previous pumps and there's a bath, there's a pump and there's a baffle, apparently that, that's in there. There's like a wet well for it where it, where water comes in and goes out. Um, but.
Ramsey County did pay us some money.
I said, yeah, but I think we offered to pay them a chunk of money for them to do it and they said.
Now, with Maplewood being part of that property, now, our, our property line through that lake falls where then? Because they consider it's Silver Lake. Yeah, I know, I realize it's not property, but Maplewood owns Joy Park, correct? Or Ramsey County does. It's part of the Maplewood program.
Maplewood, yes.
And I think North Temple has like two-thirds of the lake and Maplewood has a third. Is that about right? Now, splits or kind of?
Yeah. I, I honestly, I don't know exactly where that line is.
More than two-thirds? Okay.
I just know that the pump is in Maplewood, Ramsey County, and we're, we're taking care of it.
Last year we didn't have to put it in, if I remember right, right?
Last year we did, yeah, last year we did turn it on.
We did, okay.
Yep. Yep. Last year did turn it on. On the year before, we did not. So the county, Ramsey County still monitors the oxygen level in the lake and lets us know when it needs to be turned on.
Now, does that keep its, uh, somewhat moving the water so the fish won't?
Yep, it's to keep, it's to keep open waters for oxygen levels for the fish. Yes. So basically it sucks, sucks water in on one side and shoots it out the other side and sprays it back in the lake.
And so I can do cold water ice rescue training in January, February.
Well, what else is there?
Well, since it, since he uses it the most, can it just be part of his budget?
Yeah, come on a fire budget because he'll use it for practice.
All in favor of moving that?
Well, you guys need to get that, uh, county, uh, airboat.
Yeah.
I was curious, where was that money put, Dan? Do you remember? For, it was, the initial offer was what, ten or fifteen? And we asked for like twenty?
Twenty.
Did we dump that into the CIP or do we, is that a separate sitting somewhere? Well, there isn't actually a CIP. It's in one of the funds. I think it would have been in the fund that pays for this aerator, which would be the, yeah, probably more than likely, yeah, whatever the appropriate.
Longevity on it?
I think they, I think they said that the, the life expectancy of them were like, was like fifteen years is what they said. Yeah, and everything was replaced within a couple of years is, at least that's what they told us.
So we should probably put that in the CIP.
What's that?
I said, so we should probably put that in our CIP.
Yeah.
Replacement of that?
That's why we have it in there.
That's why it is in there, yeah.
Yeah, something.
So nobody knows how old it is though.
They said, I, I believe they said it was, it was a few years old when we took it over.
We pick these years based off of what they gave us. Best of our knowledge.
The best of my knowledge.
Maybe it can be pushed out.
It's not a timeline, but. Yes.
Well, you're.
And then the lake can freeze over and.
Yeah, Dave said we're not going to maintain it anymore. You can take it if you want. Other questions on this section? We'll move on to utility infrastructure, and this is where you're going to see that, uh, the new Tower Park Water Tower, um, in twenty twenty-nine. Um, and then, you know, it has well rehabs. So when you look at this utility infrastructure, they're being, you know, it's being funded by our utilities, whether water, wastewater, surface water. Um, so, um, that's where you're seeing, um, the cost for these.
Dan, I'm confused. You said it is the Northwood Tower that's going to be replaced?
Nope.
Oh.
The time, sorry, the new, I said, um, the new Tower Park.
Okay.
The North Water Tower, so.
Is it what?
Which is in Tower Park, the Northwood Water Tower.
Oh, in Tower.
So. A lot of Norths is around here.
Then you can, you can see the Northwood Water Tower paint and rehab in twenty thirty-two. Boy.
You can just call it North and South Tower.
And then, and then you have a, a big one, because I think they're what, hitting their fifteen, what is it, twenty years for the meter replacement twenty-year program?
Yes. So the water meter replacement program, the meters were replaced roughly fifteen years ago is when it started. They were, it started to get installed. Um, one year there's going to be just a, uh, like a hundred of them put in or a ten of them, I think, put in and turned into, just, we just kept going, replacing the water meters. So they were replaced over the course of about three years-ish. Um, we were installing them as Public Works and then it just got to be too much, so a company was hired to go out and help install the meters. Well, the water meters are a sealed meter and there's a battery in them. They have a battery life of about twenty years. There's a, there's a meter and a radio and they have about a twenty-year lifecycle. Now, just speaking with them, we have a little bit of flex on those, um, as far as timing, but we're going to have to start replacing them because, um, our commercial meters that we put in are bigger ones, inch and a half and bigger meters. Uh, they have a, you can replace the, the head on them that has the, the actual meter on them with the battery in it. And there's a ten-year lifecycle on those and pretty much all of those have gone out at ten years in a day. I mean, they're like right around there, like clockwork. So, um, we have to get this on the schedule to have them to go out and start replacing these. Um, obviously, we're not going to be able to do it all physically and financially in a year. Um, so it's going to take some time and, you know, we're going to look at, you know, trying to hire someone to, to do that just because it's a, it's a big job getting, it was, it was tough getting in everyone's home to, homes to begin with. Now, after COVID, it's going to be probably even more of a challenge. Um, we, we try to install the radios outside on a lot of these so we can do a lot of troubleshooting from outside the people's home without having to go in them. But we do have a, a fair amount of, uh, radios inside people's homes too. But like I said, that meter replacement program, we, you know, we're going to have to start that just to try to get ahead of it. And the, the meters back then were kind of installed randomly throughout town. So, you know, I, I'd say each week, you know, we, we deal with kind of meter problems on a day, a daily basis. Um, I think they say the faulty rate on them is acceptable is like one percent. So, you know, you kind of always kind of dealing with something. Um, but we're just going to probably take a chunk of town and, you know, break it into thirds or quarters, however we, uh, you know, can financially do it and just start and replace all the, replace all the meters. So that's what will be coming in, what do we have, twenty-seven? I think, starting that.
Starting.
So. And it sounds like the meters, they're pretty much the same type of deal as, you know, they don't have a meter that has a forty-year life on it anymore, you know, forty-year longer life, but it's kind of is what it is. And that's our, our system census that reads the meters and I think, uh, half the electric meters also, so.
Trying to bring the old guys out of retirement who used to walk house to house, look at the outside.
Yeah, I was, I was working here when they, we still had the meter readers.
What was his name?
I think there's a, there's a handful of them.
You just needed a pacemaker. He didn't need a battery. Maybe he did then for the pacemaker.
I remember talking to him all the time.
Yeah, nice guy.
Ron, just out of curiosity, um, the water meters aren't rocket science to install. Do, do you know of any cities ever let homeowners install their own?
No. It is not rocket science, but.
Well.
But, uh, you know, and I don't mean this in any negative way. I mean, most people don't even know where their water meter is in their home. You know, when we did this, uh, just having people look at what type of service line comes in their house, just to tell us that. You know, it, it's, you know, and at the end of the day, it, it's really not a big deal, but a lot of, when we went in, because I was a person, we, Randy and I were both, we're people out there in the front line starting to put these in, you're going down to a valve that hadn't been touched in eighty years. And you touch that valve and you replace that meter and then all of a sudden there's water leaking out of that valve and a day later there might be water leaking out of it. Or, I mean, it's just, uh, and them valves probably haven't been touched since the last time we were in there. It, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago. I, I just don't know how much of a benefit that would be to us at the end of the day, you know?
Plus we got a program to link the two together, you know, as we install.
Okay.
Yes. So like I said, we have a radio outside. There's a wire that runs from the radio inside. Um, and then it connects to the meter and then you basically marry the two together when, when you leave. So the radio picks up the signal, you know, from the meter. So there's a, there's a computer program that we use for that, so. And the meters can be put in backwards, so they run backwards or, and don't ask me how I know that.
We're writing checks to them every month.
There's a little, I mean, it is not rocket science, but, um, there's a little to it. And even the people that do them all the time, they install backwards and.
All right. And for older, older homes, it's the ground source. So if you come across that, it can kill you if, if there's a load on it.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's another thing, you know, a lot of the meters, they, you know, and jumper cable has to be installed. Before, there wasn't a jumper cable because it was a metal meter. It, you know, all your grounding for your house goes through your water service. So when we put these plastic meters in, there's a jumper cable that was installed to keep that ground in place too, so.
Fun fact, I pulled mine off the wall when I was, when I moved in. You guys came in and you were like, oh, there's something wrong with your water meter.
Got tired of that bill, huh?
We, we had your mug shot up at the shop for.
We don't need that.
Let's say you really don't want anyone installing them.
Any other questions? Yep, yes.
So the electric vehicle charging stations in twenty twenty-seven, is there a big call for those? I guess, I mean, have we had a lot of people reach out to us and be like, hey, why doesn't the city have these?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
We had the one in front of City Hall here, um, which wasn't used a real lot. And, uh, we had one that was going to go behind, uh, K and J.
Oh, okay.
Um, and it was going to be supplied by our power supplier, but unfortunately, the vendor they chose, they had nothing but problems and, uh, so they kind of backed away from that, so.
Okay. I just, I, not, just asking, because I know a lot of, you know, businesses and, you know, Just asking, because I know a lot of, you know, businesses and, you know, have those, so.
Yeah, John would probably, I mean, I think Brian's pretty in tune with the electric department still, but John would probably know more about it.
Okay.
Troy, do you see a need for it? Are you questioning why we have it?
I'm questioning why we have it, I guess. I mean, is it something that the city really needs to be able to supply?
Where it does get to commute.
Or we can take it off the.
Or we, yeah, we could, is it something we could take off of our budget and, you know?
I do have the one in front of City Hall that we can.
And it depends on where the market goes. I mean.
Yeah, true.
Right now, it's.
Not favorable.
Hesling a bit, but it could very well come back.
True.
Yeah, this, this item has been pushed out like year after year after year. You know, so it's twenty-seven, time we get to twenty-seven, we'll probably push it out.
Keep kicking that can down the road until, you know, until the can, you know, isn't needed. Or, you know, all of a sudden, it gets electrified and then, then we'll do it, so.
Any other questions on the utility infrastructure part?
I guess one silly question, and maybe not a silly question, but as I'm the representative for the Arts and Culture Commission, I know the work being done for the water towers, is that something, you know, we could bring up to the Art Committee? You know, as an opportunity to, you know, could we do a big snowman on one of the water towers or something like that, a snowman face or something like that? I don't know.
Well, it's already on Tower Park anyways.
Right.
This snowman is on there anyways.
Could the water tower look like a snowman?
Yeah. Could we, you know, the new one, could we make it, you know, I'm just. Are there new designs for water towers that we could take advantage of that?
I have, I have not seen water towers shaped like.
A snowman.
Sid Woodstrom has a teapot.
Yeah, there's a teapot that smokes.
Morgan? He's using your lifeline.
Right, for the, for the right money, anything is possible.
I mean, to make something aesthetic, whether you're talking about.
Just put a spigot on our snowman we already got.
More, more extra hardware is certainly something that other communities have done, but there is a cost.
Additional cost to that, okay.
The cost estimates we have now do not include aesthetic treatments.
Okay, fair enough.
Oh, he's good. Any other questions?
I'm done.
And then our next section, which is a very big section, is its equipment. So you'll see, see it has the police interceptor replacement schedule. There's eight vehicles that get rotated every six years. And then you have everything else for every other department that's in the city, from fire to parks, streets, forestry, you name it. It covers all of the different components. One of the bigger ticket items that's coming up in 2030 is the ladder truck in the Fire Department, because that one carries a revised estimate of $2 million. And I'll kind of pause right there and just allow our Fire Chief to kind of talk about the ladder truck a little bit, so everybody on council is kind of aware of the need.
Yeah, okay. I think what I'd like to do first is do a quick, brief description of our current ladder truck and understanding what it is as I compare it to the cost of a, a new one in today's dollars and what it looks like. So our current ladder truck is a platform aerial device, so it has the bucket on the back, which holds people, and it has waterways on each side to flow water. It can go up and extend out a hundred feet, and it can rotate three hundred and sixty degrees. So it was built in, originally in 1982. It was manufactured by Sutford Incorporated, and I believe we purchased it through Custom Fire. In 2001, we refurbished it, because the chassis at that time needed to be upgraded, because we actually had firefighter seats that were outside of the cab. So like, we had three people inside and two people that sat outside in the back. So it was updated in 2001, where we basically took the ladder off of the current chassis and put it on a new HME chassis. And that cost was about, was $355,000 to do that refurb and upgrade. So here we are, basically forty-three years later, and we have, you know, a ladder device that's still functional and, and works and moves, but we have, and we get it tested. We have, we test all of our equipment. But obviously, there are numerous safety concerns, obviously, from age. Some of the things we did back then that we no longer do now is climbing the ladder. We used to climb that ladder all the time, a hundred feet up and a hundred feet down, but, right. Currently, newer ladders have eighteen inch minimum side rails to protect the firefighter, to keep them from going over. Our side rails are basically two inch handles on the side. So things have changed a little bit over the years. Setup time for our current ladder is about five to seven minutes, and it takes three to four people, where a new ladder can be done by one person. And with the automation, it's done in less than a minute. So that's a big factor as well in helping out. The big cost of this is it, it, over the last few years, as, as we've invested into and talked about, you know, fire equipment and the cost of it, it, it's a lot, and it continues to go up, and I, I just keep getting surprised more and more. But currently, I've had multiple conversations across different manufacturers looking at, at options. And currently, 1.9 to $2 million for a truck that is, is more of a ladder device that doesn't have a bucket on the back, where a platform, so if we were to replace our current ladder as is, we're talking 2.5 million, as in right, right now, not in 2030. Each year, it's going to go up five and a half, five to five and a half percent. So the two million for the ladder truck, a hundred thousand dollars each year. 2.5 million, you know, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars each year going up. And that's, that's a big factor as well. So as I've looked through our equipment and replacement as well, and it may not be a huge thing, but like Dan had, had brought up in the, in the beginning, we've always tried to look at our equipment and see if we can push it down the road a little bit more on the smaller things, and we certainly have done that. And as I look at some of our squads that we have, our squad five-eleven and our squad five-twelve, one that's up in twenty-six and one that's up in twenty-seven, I can honestly say they're in decent condition at this point. We don't have a lot of maintenance going into them. We can push them down another year or two potentially. There is some savings in, to that, obviously. I don't know how that really all works out. I haven't sat down with Dan to work on that. But I do know that by doing that and potentially setting up, pushing it, the, the purchase of a ladder truck earlier in 2028 is going to save minimally $300,000 in today's dollars, because in January 2026, it's going to go up, on average, they go up five to five and a half percent each year. Now, the, the other benefit of, for the past few years, we've worked with a manufacturer that did our last engine. And they do not, once we lock in, we don't have to pay until we're done. It was a little different with our engine, because we had to buy a chassis separately. But with this ladder, it basically would be when it's done, and then we have to pay. And during that timeframe, there would be no surcharges, where there are some manufacturers out there that also have surcharges built into it. So even if you lock in your price, if there's an additional surcharge, they would do that. I had verbal confirmation today from the manufacturer that, tell them there would be no surcharges, which is a big deal. And obviously, changes over the years in the community versus 1982, when we got the ladder truck to now, you know, obviously, there's been growth in the community to some extent, and the, the needs as we've increased our, our buildings and our building sizes, you know, our apartment buildings as well. So you kind of heard me say platform and ladder. So what I'm talking about is, I'm looking around to see that, any firefighters behind me, and Ron's probably even going, what are you doing? But 2.5 million dollars versus, we're getting a couple of calls here. 2.5 million dollars versus $2 million is a lot of money, and I understand that. And I know with purchasing a ladder that doesn't necessarily have a bucket on the end of it, it's still going to have a waterway, it's still going to be a hundred feet, it's still going to allow us to do the things that I think are, provide the rescues, provide firefighting, you know, up at higher levels, ventilation, the water flow, and still provide a value to the community. I don't feel it as losing out. And that's my feeling on it, just because of the cost. Plus, I can honestly say that, yeah, that's, I've had some thought about it and talked with other chiefs and seen what other departments have, have done in the past, so. I'll kind of leave it at that. If you have any more questions, I do have advantages, disadvantages, stuff like that, but I don't know, I think you may have other questions for me.
No, that's why you are the Fire Chief and we are not. So, I mean, we'll trust your judgment on this. And, I mean, the safety of the firefighters under your care is your first and foremost, well, one of your first and foremost concerns, so, yeah.
I know you did a good job at pricing out the engine. You looked around to quite a few different places, and you put a lot of that, and it's appreciated by what.
I really feel proud, I'm, to say that we got a good deal at $800,000 for an engine. It's unreal, because I know there are departments right now that are paying 1.1 to 1.4 for a brand new engine two years later.
Appreciate that.
But I, I, I do think, for me, the big, the, the biggest thing that I would like you to think about is the potential savings by moving it up a couple of years.
Yeah, when you're talking percentages, I mean, percentage of, you know, five percent of 2 million versus five percent of, you know, 65, 65,000 for unit five-twelve, it's a huge deal. So, I mean, if we push that one back and move this one forward, yeah, that absolutely makes sense. I mean, not the same amount of money, but the savings is huge, so.
And you also need to look at it that, you know, obviously, it's going to have a useful life of like thirty-five years, thirty to thirty-five years, versus many of our existing equipment, you know, are going to be more in that range of ten, fifteen years. So moving something up that could potentially save you, you're going to realize that over the years.
Is there any market for the old one, or is it just too old?
There is a limited market out there. There are places that will, will buy it, but much like our current old engine that will eventually go out there, you know, that's a potential I'm seeing out there in the market anywhere from 30 to 40,000 dollars for the old engine. So this ladder, because it was refurbished, the chassis is probably valued more than that, but it, it all depends what's saturated in the market at that time. There's a couple of different businesses out there that purchases the trucks and resell them.
Other questions on equipment items?
Nope.
All the normal routine as far as, we're six years now? We're up six years is for the police, for the police units?
That's correct, yes.
Didn't they move around a little bit, wasn't it five?
Yeah, when I originally came here, it was seven years. I get moved down to five and then back up to six, is what was agreed to with the Police Chief at that time and City Council. We've got about ten minutes left of the workshop, so kind of just take kind of a reminder of where we're at quickly with the proposed 2026 levy, that our 2026 levy achieves that six percent levy increase, no utility rate increases for 2026. Again, shows the different components. If we add HRA and EDA, we have a total of levy, because they're all levies, comes to 5.84 percent. Kind of watch it through, and some of these items we'll end up discussing next Tuesday about the penalty transfer and some other components. But that's how we ended up achieving the 2026. And you can really see that the bigger, the biggest driver again is your personnel costs, and then it's these levies for the CIP. Some other information.
Dan, what is next Tuesday?
I'm sorry, our next, our next meeting, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The first Tuesday in September, if I misspoke. Isn't that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so not next Tuesday.
I was worried he was going to miss a meeting.
He said next Tuesday.
So right now, if we were to look at, you know, with this 5.84 total levy increase, if you looked at a median value income home in 2025 of $303,000, you know, basically, there would be no property tax increase based upon the preliminary numbers or values that are coming out of Ramsey County. The median value did increase 2.41 percent from 303 to 310. So when we put that into action with the 5.84 percent total levy increase, the tax bill for a resident meeting that criteria would increase 37, $38, about 2.8 percent. Part of the reason for that, even though levy's going up, is, kind of wanted to show, I mean, this was, one of our council members had talked about fiscal disparities. So if you look over the past 10 years, here's where the levies are in, in the orange color, and then in the blue is what the fiscal disparities has, that we have received. So in other words, we can levy 8.4 million dollars. We're getting fiscal disparities of 1.7 million dollars. So that means our taxpayers are paying for 6.7 million dollars. They're not paying the full 8.4 million, because we are, in the fiscal disparities world, we're a winner. And to answer the council member's question, fiscal disparities has been, if you look consistently across the 10 years, it's right around about a 20 percent. So for every dollar that we raise in levy, we've been pretty close to getting 20 cents back in fiscal disparities. I do have sleepless nights since the time that I've been here, that I'm responsible for increasing the levy over time. But if we, so what I did was, part of what this graph is showing is the orange line here is the levy for the city HRA and EDA. And the blue is for our streets, parks and facilities. Again, it's that component that I've been talking about. If you want to pay for that, a capital improvement plan, that you have to do the levies. So when I look at this, I have a little bit more comfort that if I look at the pay 24 versus the pay 26, so in two years, our levy for city HRA and EDA has only gone up $60,000. Where the increase has been is over a million dollars has been levied for streets, parks, facilities. And that's what the trend is, again, been trying to emphasize, is going to be continuing if you want that CIP plan, to be able to afford that. Again, and then, and I'm going to show one more graph of this. These are some of the items that we'll be talking that were kind of outstanding when we kind of looked at, and that's, do we add that $30,000 for levy for the parks? And that's, do we add that thirty thousand dollars for levy for the parks? The community center's gonna require a transfer of approximately eighty-five thousand dollars for that operation, um, in its current state. And then, um, there was discussion on whether to continue to do that hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, uh, transfer, um, from the, the penalty from the electric to the general fund or to levy those dollars. And those will be some things that we'll pick up, um, the first meeting in September. Um, and, and part of it is we set that maximum levy. One final slide that I wanted, wanted to, to show, um, is that as we compare ourselves to other cities in Ramsey County, um, and I, and I know that, um, a lot of the taxpayers have seen, um, increases, you know, in their property taxes. And I think we all know the reasons why now it's really being driven by that infrastructural needs. But here's a look at the cities from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. Um, and as we look at this graph, here's where the levies have increased. So over the past five years, um, on an average, we've, um, increased our levy eight point three percent. We're actually in the middle of the cities in Ramsey County. The one that has the highest percentage is White Bear Lake, uh, twenty point six. A lot of that has to do with, um, building a brand new public safety facility and some other infrastructural needs. And then you see the low end is Falcon Heights at a six percent. But overall, of those five years, um, it's averaged seven point five percent for these ci, these cities in, in Ramsey County. So when you look at it from that standpoint, we're not really out of line. You remember last year, and I've mentioned it a number of times, our property tax rate is the second highest in Ramsey County, only behind, um, you know, for a city that's fully within Ramsey County, behind St. Paul. Our levy's kind of in line, but our rate goes up a little bit higher. And part of that again is we don't have the commercial base. Um, we have a residential base. So when you convert the, a market value for a resident versus commercial, it has a lower net tax capacity, um, rate that's, that's set by a state statute, which results in a lower base in which you, you know, um, so your levy is your numerator, your net tax capacity or market value converted over is your denominator. When you do it, your rate just is higher than the other ones. But from a levy standpoint, we have been relatively in line with what the other cities in Ramsey County have been facing too. Any final questions? Give you three minutes back, four minutes? We will continue at our next, uh, city council meeting and try to set that maximum tax levy.
Nothing else? Can I get a call for a year?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Schwer.
Second.
Second. Councilmember Woods, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Give us five minutes and we'll be back.